All right, I'll call the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting to order for Monday, August 6th. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of July 2nd. Everybody want to check that over? Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
We need a motion.
Oh.
I remember we have a couple of minutes.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Motion carries. All right. I have no announcements, do you, Sue?
Oh, I am working on, um, the woman that had formatted our town plan, who had done the design for it, I'm in the midst of contracting with her to do ours as well, and so, a couple of questions. Um, we need to pick out a cover photo. Is anybody interested in being involved in that? I prefer not to do it by myself.
I'd be happy to help.
Anybody else?
I will freely give opinions.
Yeah.
All right, so if we can pick out a couple and then we can...
We can narrow down to a couple and then just run.
Okay, that would be good. And then Kate, or I guess anybody else, our names are all going to be listed. Do you want Kate or Catherine? Have you want me to add?
You guys are really fine, Catherine's good.
Catherine, okay. That's why I'm giving it to her, but then it was like...
It just spells funky, did you get the funky spell?
I'm... Can you remind me? I think I did get that. All right, okay.
And I'd just like to be AICP.
Yes.
Institute of Certified Planners.
Ah, okay, okay.
Does anybody else have any requests? You should go with the full name.
Should I, should I, should I have PhD?
You could!
I can!
Yeah!
Why not?
Yeah.
Do you, no, I'm just kidding. It's not actually relevant to this work.
Well, I need to get continuing education credits and not use my service.
And it's completely relevant, but, yeah.
Alrighty. Okay. That's it. And there's no public, so there's no comments. So, should we have the organizational meeting? Yeah. I would like to be chair, and I think Kathy has...
My suggestion is to be vice chair.
Kate, are you willing to continue as clerk?
I was clerk last year, I'm willing to continue, although it's a rough job. Work I've had.
I suppose.
I suppose.
Is there anyone else who would like to?
Do we need to formally nominate?
We will. We could do a slate.
But I was just wondering whether anyone else wanted to nominate themselves, or anyone else?
If anybody else would like, of having them drop a clerk for, for a term, you're welcome to have it, I'm happy to share. I move the slate.
Very good.
Hesited.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Um, let's vote on the slate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Very good. Thank you all. Uh, reviewing the bylaws.
Um, oh boy, I'm sorry, I did not bring copies.
I reviewed it for the last meeting.
I reviewed it last time as well.
Took them out, I saved them, and then I took them up. They talk about the meeting, I think one of the things we do need to change is the meeting time, I don't think that was ever changed in the bylaws.
Yeah, I know it's not changed on the website.
Okay.
What about locations?
Yeah.
The location, I think...
Do you like this location?
I think the location also has to change.
Yeah. To here.
Yeah.
And we want to make it 5:30, quarter to 6:00? Quarter to 6:00 would be better for me.
Quarter to 6:00 would certainly be better for me in the fall, when I promise in the spring it's going to come along.
Six would be so much better.
Six?
Six.
Six is too...
Six o'clock, I think, I think it's six o'clock in the bylaws, so we're, we'll just move it back.
Six o'clock, yes.
Yeah.
That works for me.
5:30 is our summer hours.
Yeah, 5:30 is a fine summer hour.
Yeah, it's, I think it is tough for a couple, some members to get here for 5:30. I feel like we often don't start until 5:45, so I think it works better.
I'm guilty.
Um, okay. So we can make those, I'll make those changes. I think it also, it addressed the, the roles of each chair, vice chair, clerk.
I remember reviewing it for the last meeting, and the only thing that I noticed was that in the meetings and the website announcement that the meetings weren't consistent. Is there anything about the open meeting law that we need to discuss?
Um, just a couple of reminders about open meeting law. Again, because we post the agendas, it's not, not such a big deal for you, but I need to post agendas at least 24 hours in advance. I try to do it at least four days in advance. We do have to have minutes within five business days on, I'm sorry, five days, not even business days, up on the town website, so draft minutes are always placed there. And then there was a couple of, there was a minor change to the state open meeting law that made it clear that if, you know, four of you are at a training session, or if four of you are at a party, or some social gathering, that as long as you're not discussing, you know, something that...
Planning commission business.
Planning commission business that results in a decision, kind of thing, that's not a meeting, so.
Is there that results in a decision?
Well, I think, and you probably should stay away from planning, I'm happy to...
Yeah, I went to a, I went to a legal session about it, and it was, you would just have to not talk about planning commission business at all.
After you couldn't argue that. I have other things to talk about.
Because I know you're just dying to talk about planning commission business.
And I think, you know, some of that, that change was so that you could all show up at a slide for meeting, looking at all my husband's things that are of interest, and all of a sudden, ooh, the planning commission's there, and that's a problem, so it's just like a minor tweak.
Or even for rats on your way party, you know, you're all invited, so we had to do a public notice.
Anyway, so that's, that's really what you need to know about the open meeting law.
Okay. Want to walk us through the brownfield?
Sure, this'll, this'll be pretty quick. Two things. I have spoken with one of our consultants about doing a petroleum inventory for a firm, Sam Gaherhead, has done plenty of them, they can do them in GIS, so it's more database, or they can do it in kind of an Excel kind of format, which could probably be easier for me to work with. And so, you know, it is something that can be done, it's a records review. I think I cannot just hire one of my consultants, though, so I have to do kind of a mini RFP, so I worked on that today to get out tomorrow. I'm asking that they put together an inventory of sites that maybe contained petroleum, underground storage tanks, above ground storage tanks, or maybe had petroleum contamination in the downtown.
And this is what we talked about the last meeting, to concentrate our efforts on getting that petroleum money spent.
That's right. On Route 142, along Route 9, quarter, Putney Road, Route 5, and Putney Road, I'm sorry, Canal Street, Route 5. So that's the area it'll focus on. And so I'll get that out, I am looking for responses, because it's like a one to two-page response, this is not a full-blown kind of proposal that we're asking for, because they're pre-qualified consultants, to have those responses back by August 24th, which might even be longer than they need. And then I might, if one of you, one or two of you could take a look at it with me, choose a consultant for that, so. So that's all ready to go out and get that going, and I'm looking for them to complete the work by September 30th. And the reason is, has to do with the RFQ for consultants. So when we hired for the Brownfields project, it was a three-year contract, and September 30th, 2018 ends the three-year contract with these pre-qualified consultants.
Three years already?
Three years.
That's amazing.
And I've, yeah, and I've asked for a one-year extension, but I can't just extend my pre-qualified consultants, so I need to...
Oh, you can't?
Go out for an RFQ for those consultants, and this is kind of, Liz participated the last time, this is a bigger deal. I mean, these firms are used to this procedure, but, you know, we're getting pretty lengthy qualifications that they send in, and then we narrow it down. And at this point, we're really only hiring them for the year, but I would do another three years, just in case we get another Jay Brownfield's grant all the meantime, but... So I'm going to have to get that out the door, so that we can hopefully procure by the end of September.
So there's no gap.
So there's no gap. So those are two things going on with the Brownfields.
I'm working it out, I'm, I'm, so they're, they have to be, they have to finish the work by September 30th, because if they go over, they're no longer qualified.
I can probably finish the contract, it is one thing I want to talk about tomorrow with our grants manager, or look through their contracts to see, maybe they can finish work, because I would have contracted them, they can probably, they might be able to finish it past the contract period, but it would be nice to just kind of keep it clean and have it done. If the September 30th deadline, you know, is a real problem for them for doing an inventory, then we can figure out how to make it work, so they can keep working on it and finish it.
And you can do the pre-qualification before the September 30th deadline?
Yes.
Yeah. So theoretically, you could like qualify them on September 30th to just keep going.
Yeah.
It's a lot, just kind of... It's just a fiscal year, I think?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a federal.
I'm sure there's a very important reason why we do it that way.
Yes. We do it that way so that every time we are looking for a consultant to do a phase one or a phase two, that I don't have to do a full-blown RFP to get that. I only have, you know, a couple, a small number of firms, and I just send it out to them, and they send me back their price and when they can get it done by. So just, it makes it go easier during the three years, it's just following, needing this extension for a year just means I have to qualify firms again.
Can you, and you have to use full set, not just the ones that were pre-qualified last time?
For the next year.
Yes.
So, I will be doing that, and then in September, again, maybe, I'll be happy to help you.
Land use regulation amendments. All right. And these are all ones that we focused on last time as well?
No, um, these are some, they're on the kind of growing on the list. Okay? So you may or may not have heard of some of these.
Did you just like take through the minutes of the last couple of years' meetings? I feel like we've talked about a handful of these.
Some of them we have, and you just haven't seen proposed language on it, so.
Yes.
But some are other ones that either Brian continuously says, maybe thinks needs to be fixed, and so, it's a good discussion. This first one is actually one of my kind of issues that I've had with the cottage cluster PUD. So originally envisioned to kind of promote smaller houses, shared common spaces, you know, kind of, maybe think, like a little retirement community, or, or something like that. I feel like the way it was written is kind of geared towards retirement community, but we've had a lot of questions about, what if we wanted to have a tiny house neighborhood, and that kind of thing, how, how could we do it? And it, something like that doesn't fall neatly, I think, into this planned unit development. I'm particularly challenged by some of the design standards, you know, that it's restricted on its height, and then the pitch of the roof, and that it has to have a porch, because I think when you think of tiny houses, or that kind of thing, they may or may not have a porch, they're not going to have that pitch, generally.
This is a cute idea, and if we had, if we had the type of town where there was tons of demand, you might be able to select, but you don't have that kind of town.
Right. So I feel like it's, as written, it's kind of restrictive, and it makes it hard to recommend it as a path for development. You know, there's still lots of, actually, I have three land use regulations, full sets, so if you want to see, there are other requirements, there's some common open space, so basically the, the units are supposed to be...
Do you know what's CHPO?
Uh, yes, 3-87. And so these planned unit developments, they're meant to give you an alternative way to develop the land, kind of as a unified plan. You often will get a density bonus, you'll get a relaxation, maybe setbacks for some other things. So, um, yeah, so there's common space, there's community buildings that you're allowed to have, access and parking, you know, parking's supposed to be on the perimeter, so that it's kind of creating like an intentional community. So, if there's anything else you see...
Has anyone ever, ever asked to have a cluster development?
No. We are having some discussions with somebody right now, actually, that is looking at creating, taking an existing property and creating some more units on that, whether they're cottages or yours or something.
I have a good name for it.
Clusters by a span.
Clusters.
I would hope not.
Um, we looked at this like with, um, Brattleboro Housing Partnerships, trying to relocate out of Melrose, um, this didn't quite meet, the design definitely didn't meet theirs, and they're definitely, it's more cost-effective for them to have a two, three-story building, um, with a bigger footprint than this, I didn't really want the state alone to get so.
Do you, by taking out number one, does that mean they can be as high as they want? Or does it have, what's the default height? Does that default, I think the height for other kind of residential is 35 feet, so does it default to 35 feet?
It would default. It would default, yeah, and I didn't really...
And it would be held to by two and three, right? Because two's saying it can't have a footprint of more than 1,200 square feet of simple family.
Three hundred feet is pretty high.
Three-sis floor, you can't exceed the footprint, so it can't be...
I mean, I, I was comfortable with the square footage size, but if you, you can feel that needs to be changed, I mean, I think the idea is these were smaller homes kind of clustered and...
I'm fine with this. These changes.
Yeah, the other one, it doesn't seem to make any, it seems fine, but, um, I just imagine the person who figures out that tiny building that goes 50 feet high.
Exactly.
Cluster towers.
I mean, doubles as a firefighter.
I mean, if it defaults to 35 feet, that's fine, but I'm just, if, if, does it, does it, is that what happens?
It would default, yeah. But, I mean, you could leave it at the, the 25 feet here, if you wanted, I mean, that would at least allow two stories, you know, one and a half stories.
No, if we want to have more flexibility, we'll let them figure it out.
I'm okay with that.
Are we all good with that? Do you want a motion?
Are there any other changes in this section?
In this cottage cluster note, which you can agree to...
For the lot, the lot coverage, there's a couple things we need to... Four, each four?
On the printout, each one.
On cottage cluster?
Nope.
Oh, no, I'm not, you're right, I just want to...
No, that's different.
That's a waiver. I'm off. Okay. So that's it for cottage clusters?
Yeah. So if you flip to page 3-88, um, so this is a traditional neighborhood development, so think about if you were to, if there was a vacant piece of parcel that connected up to some existing street pattern, so say you have grid of streets and a kind of a vacant parcel there, the idea here would kind of be to continue the grid network of streets, and this is a little bit more new urbanism, where you might have alleyways where you access garage, and here, because it is new urbanist, you're looking for creating a street kind of presence, so the porches and that kind of thing to sidewalks, porches, connectivity. So, we do have some places where you can't necessarily make a connection, we don't want, you know, within the, the PUD, we do want interconnected streets, we don't want to see lollipops or just, you know, cul-de-sacs within the PUD, but sometimes you can't actually, if this is the parcel, you can't necessarily get two connections to the existing neighborhood, and so, the zoning administrator was a little concerned that, that there could be some issues with connectivity.
I think you're on number three.
You're talking about three?
Oh.
Two and three are a little the same.
Never mind.
The topography one we got rid of, so get rid of three, sorry. Sorry about that.
You'll have to tell us what the service center district is.
Okay.
Isn't that, isn't that like a strip mall?
That, the service center is the Putney Road, kind of commercial district, so it basically goes from the corner, it's this two, ignore this down here, because this is a, this was a draft map, but it, it ended up being the final map with a couple tweaks, and this is whatever. So, this is the service center, it's the west side of Route 5, when you're north of the roundabout, so kind of the hotels, 99, um...
Are there residences there now? I know there's a lot of residences on the other side of Putney Road.
There are, well Windsor Housing Trust recently opened, Greatview Terrace, um, I, there may be some residences in the other motels, I'm not really sure, to be honest.
There is, it's here, but that's the green zone.
However, yeah, however, there are some parcels, you know, back in here, both here, there's some that are kind of, the bus depot is in here, you could imagine them being redeveloped, maybe with some neighborhoods, and this might be a good option.
Yeah, I think there's actually, I mean, I see a lot of people trying to walk across the street there, and go to the laundromat and so forth, so I think there's a residential presence there.
There is, yeah, I mean, there definitely is in the orange, there's some housing back in here, and in here. So, we thought that, you know, why not allow it in the service center, it's, you know, if, if one of those properties was to be developed, I don't think it's happened, going to happen, but one of the places, well, I don't know what happened, because there is another development plan approved here, but kind of on the corner of, sorry, Black Mountain and Putney Road, you know, that, that could, that could be nice.
That one house.
Yeah, that whole area back there could make a, a potential development.
And we're not talking about the other side of the street with the lamplighter, yet, that's a later one.
Not yet, that's coming up, yes.
I'm all for it. What does everybody else think?
So, we're, essentially, we're re-zoning this area, just calling it something else?
We're adding the use to it. No, we're not re-zoning it, we are adding the ability to do a traditional neighborhood development PUD. So you could, we do allow residential development in that neighborhood, not really pre, not focused on, one and two family would be conditional use, but multifamily housing is allowed in the service center. This would give another type of residential development that could be done in it.
And this, and primarily, you're, the person doing that would be a developer?
A developer.
Who would build a multi-family...
Yeah, or this, which is more of a kind of, this might be a single family or...
Speculative house, middle neighborhood, subdivision.
We're allowed the cottage cluster development.
Um, does cottage cluster... No, cottage cluster would not be allowed there, so.
Hmm, huh, why not?
Seems like that would be a lovely use for that.
Yeah, that would be a lovely, right.
Yep, see? You find little things when you...
We can do them both.
We can do them both, but yeah, it's, uh...
Why, why would it not be?
I don't have any opposition.
I don't get it, I don't get it.
It was not, because, um, I can't recall why it wasn't for that.
You know, in the evolution of the cluster development, I mean, we studied all sorts of ways to be, to cluster and to be more concise, but we were thinking mostly West Brattleboro for that.
I think so.
So, it didn't kind of make its way up to Putney Road.
Oh, huh.
It was kind of a rural development technique, to keep open space and to keep farms, but also to have...
Yeah.
I think it would make a really interesting affordable housing option that's near a lot of services.
Right, so people could walk all, I mean, it would be great for people who live where they could walk their grocery store.
It makes a lot of sense, I mean, if you think about the housing development, I mean, the closest thing that we kind of have to a cottage cluster is, and it's not, not quite...
Return community.
Yeah, it's up, it's up the hill, hill on Black Mountain, just over the interstate, and that's been a pretty successful development, they're, those units are about 1,600 square feet, I think, and so, yeah, I mean, one of the nice things about that is it is close to the services on Putney Road, and so, I think if we're saying that the service center is a good place for housing, and housing infill, then there's no reason not to have cottage cluster there, too.
So what's, can I ask you what's going into that?
There is a proposal right now for new storage, they still have a ballot for them.
Oh, no!
Sorry.
Am I not supposed to have it in the paper?
That's a bad... God, people have a lot of stuff.
I suppose it's good if there's a cottage cluster there, because you already have your... Apparently, it's very hard to live in a tiny house, you really need the storage unit and the tiny...
That's true.
I certainly would.
All right, we good with those two things, everybody?
Yep.
Signs.
Creative signs?
Yeah, I've got some thoughts on it.
Okay, no, this is great, this was, I want to preface the conversation with signs in that we, I, there was a big Supreme Court case a couple of years ago called Gilbert versus something, and I...
Federal Supreme Court or...
Yes, state, federal Supreme Court, and I have reviewed our sign regulations, and we do need to make some greater wholesale changes as it pertains to temporary signs, so real estate, political, the fact that we call them real estate signs, and political signs, and event signs, means we're in conflict with the law. We, it has to be content neutral, so I need to spend a little bit more time on, on the sign section.
It, the, the, we can't have those political signs, those lawn signs?
Yeah, you just can't call them political signs, because the court case says, as a First Amendment thing, that you can't differentiate about what the signs say.
Yes. So there are lots of models in how to handle it, so I'm confident that it can be done pretty quickly, it just wasn't, I wasn't able to do it for this meeting. It's pretty much where the changes are going to be, are going to be in the exempt signs, which are start on page 355, and finish on 358, because there's a bunch of graphics on the other pages. And then we have another weird one where we allow, we allow institutional, and I think public signs, they can be a bit larger, so...
Ooh, oh, look at all that.
Yeah, so, anyway, that, I'm just, signs will be back, because I do need to make some tweaks to this. So, now let's talk about creative signs, which honestly, I need to make sure they fit within Gilbert as well, but... But the Planning Advisory Service, they send out these interesting, do you know the PAS records? They recently had one on creative signs and that's post-Gilbert, so. Anyway.
And does this conform to those?
Is this language that?
This is language that came from a couple of different, I think I kind of went through, got rid of some guidelines, changed stuff up, but it's based on, I think Hollywood, actually, California. And it may have been an Arizona community, creative signs, so.
So you can have these kind of fuzzy criteria that skirt around aesthetics? But they don't really dictate aesthetics, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I mean, I'm not, they, these, this criteria is a bit different than the way the rest of our.
Very different.
Regulations read, so I'm really interested to hear.
I think the, the, the use of aesthetic imaginative thoughtfulness inventiveness.
And spirit.
That, that is, those are the ones that really.
They're, they're all so, um, subjective.
Yeah, one, one's very unneedy.
And it would, I, I feel like it would put the DRB, cause they'll be deciding on these, in a tricky spot.
Well, I think they're already in a tricky spot because they don't have the flex building now, right? That's why they've asked this?
Is it the DRB who's asked?
It did come from the DRB back in twenty seventeen. I think in particular, a couple of them had some interest in, in, you know, if you look at our standard sign regulations, you might never able to, be able to do what Lawton Dry Cleaners did.
Okay, hand and horse.
Dee.
A couple of, you know, signs, outrageous has an interesting sign where it's like a bumper of a truck or something, or the front end of a truck and it's kind of welded and, you know, the sign is on that. That was a little bit tough, we figured out how to make that work.
So I don't see a size anywhere, is there something that refers back to sizes?
There is not.
But how in heaven's name does anybody make the, write the decision about a high degree of thoughtfulness, imagination, inventiveness and spirit?
If you think.
You know it when you see it.
Yeah, the, the, the way that I've seen this worked is either there is an expert who can come in and give, I don't know, testimony or whatever.
Aesthetic sign expert.
Right. To that, or there is a vision by the town that sort of says what this, what these words actually mean.
Well, like if you take, for example, that super huge flag sign that I know you guys wrestled with, that was allowed.
Why? Because it's an American flag?
Yeah, so.
No. Really?
So people are gonna use that as a basis.
As a basis. Yeah.
For.
No, I mean, I share these concerns.
That doesn't show a high degree of thoughtfulness, imagination, inventiveness.
Hatredism.
Spirit, spirit, but inventiveness, I don't think so.
Spirit. Let's hear it.
Yeah.
Imagination, not really.
No, but I mean, you know, if you, if you use that as a precedent and there's no size category, that seems very odd to me. I can understand, you know, the traditional thing is light and glare. And, you know, what are, what are the nuisance criteria? But I don't see anything that, you know, you could have, you could blot out your neighbor's sun. Well, I guess that's light and glare, but.
The latches could decide that it wants to put a neon latches blinking beautiful, like deco-inspired sign outside, which would light up that bottom part of Main Street like crazy.
Well, wouldn't that come under light and glare?
Yes, it would, but, I don't know, I just think that there should, should be some sort of a.
And is there?
Encapsulating size.
There's nothing currently, is, is that correct?
There's nothing that allows like a waiver or anything that might be different than came in. So, all right, here's, here's one and we might, we might be able to, it's another thing that I'll be looking at is blade size. So blade sign is a, a vertical blade sign, might be one that looks like a banner. And so you might have whatever the name of the store is, say it's Joe's, it would, you know, J-O-E-S. And it affixes to the building like a projecting sign, but it's more vertical in nature than our signs are geared towards horizontal. Recently, insight photography came before they're moving from near the transportation center to where Moca Joe's Roastery used to be. They want a blade sign so that when you are like on Main Street and you're down the alley, you see it come out. Because it's a blade sign and it runs vertical, it is automatically larger than our sixteen square feet that are allowed for, for projected signs.
Oh, so there isn't a, there is a size limitation on signs?
There is a size limitation on signs, yeah. So we could still stick with size limitation, it depends on what type of sign it is.
Do you wanna make a standard for horizontal versus vertical?
Well, I think, I think you might see that next month. We're just trying to figure out the size, what's a good size for that. Or we might just wait and encounter that in the downtown mastermind.
We could open a Nashville, that's really cool.
Yep. So.
So is, is that part of this creative thing?
A blade sign could be, I mean, it could have come in under this, but it sounds like I'm hearing that we need more objective criteria and we need, and we need to tie it back to the sign size because that's not there, yeah.
Is there, is there a way of, of saying that it, it relates in some iconographic way to the content of the business? Because then you slowly get to some kind of objective criteria. Because if you look at the business and you think what the business is there for, the sign relates in some way to that, that would enable you to make some kind of stylistic decisions.
I like that.
Can I ask a not just question?
Please do.
Okay. So if I'm looking at section three nineteen, page three fifty-five, if we, if it's hard to make, I don't know, we can't really make a judgment on content of the sign, how can we get away with number eleven on that page? Signs that you just have seen lead vulgar indecent words or images.
I need to double check that, but there, there was a, there were a couple of concurring opinions.
I wrote a case that came out. Yeah, okay.
And I think that might.
Somebody wanted to do a Betty Page sign.
That might fall under. Um, I'll need to check on that.
There was a, I don't know what town it was, but San Francisco, somebody wanted to do a Betty Page sign. Cause they were Betty Page people and they were in trouble with that.
And this was inappropriate.
If she was considered a, a decent image.
Um, I'd be interested if perhaps, um, qualifying for, as a creative sign would allow you a, um, to not comply with one or two of the rules, but not all of them.
Do you have particular rules in mind?
I mean, I, I, I don't know. I think it would depend on the design of the sign.
So a couple of the rules, like you can't have internally lit, um, signs, uh, let's see. So in the service center up on Putney Road, it has to be externally lit? You can't have an internally lit sign, so you couldn't have. Well, that, yeah, that's, that's not allowed. But internally lit, think, you know, fluorescent tubes on the inside and then, you know.
I'm all for more flexibility with signs in the hopes to get something, you know, credible or funky. I just think, we might, we just need to think about this more, get our thoughts together. In terms of a, what are, what are s, we don't know that much about sign regulation. It's a whole different kind of words.
Yeah, I felt that it would be, it would be good to understand better, you know, kind of where, what we can do and what we can't do before you agree to something, because I, I don't want us to, you know, put, I don't wanna put something out there and then be in a position and then we have to rethink it again after something comes up, you know, like ideally we'd like to get it right. But I, I would like to have a sign.
Yeah.
It would, yeah, would be nice to have creative signs.
I think in general, we're all.
You're all for it.
For creative signs.
But like how do you?
But I will, I'm still struggling on how to get there, cause I, I mean, I wanted to get your reactions, cause this, you know, some of the language that came out of the Hollywood one is definitely very subjective and would be hard for the DRB maybe to say, well, no, you can't do that.
Unless you, unless the system worked like the Town Arts Council could say, yes, this is an artistic sign and should qualify, having the arts coun, arts council being qualified people that could say something like that.
Set up a recommendation.
Is that what they call the Town Arts Council?
Maybe.
Which is currently not functioning?
No, I think they're stopped. I think they are, they're, they have a problem. Um.
Okay, so should we put this on hold and go to district boundaries?
Do, I, I have a couple of questions, just to help guide me a little bit as I've been through this some more. Do you think there are certain districts where it's more appropriate to allow a creative sign? For example, like in the downtown, on Putney Road, on Canal Street, in the Village, um.
Well, those are the places where there's commercial areas. Are there any other places that allow signs?
You can have signs in the residential neighborhood, they're pretty small, like, so, you know, it might be more appropriate to keep those the way they are, but we can, we can limit this to, yeah.
Well, my favorite sign is in Dumerson, and it's a violin maker. You've ever seen it? And there's cut out of the violin, and then the cutout of the violin itself hangs down from the side. So it's like empty violin shape and then the violin shape itself, it's really cool. Maybe that's, is that something kind of like what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think it is.
Cool. And that looks, that's in front of a house. So that would be fun.
Yeah, I don't think that, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't restrict creative signs in neighborhoods. I think that's kinda cool. If we're trying to build an exception, I probably would restrict, I would agree, I probably would restrict what areas the exception could apply, so you could have, you know, the default language per section here, but then have the, the kickouts for any of them.
But maybe then the design assessment should include suitability to the, and, which appears.
Yeah, there just needs to be some sort of criteria, I think is what we're looking for in terms of all liking, we all like the overall flexibility in the neighborhood, in districts.
Yeah, no, if I understood, but the, the DRB wanted the flexibility passive, so we're not giving them something they want.
Yeah, I think it's, in particular, somebody has an affinity for signs, and particularly old signs, and would love to see some of those older style signs still be able to be recreated.
I think that's, well, I think that's a nice setting, when we have older style signs and you go to like, you know, some places in America where there aren't any, that's a, that's a distinction.
You're gonna have a town. Well, is it more of a historical signage thing that maybe?
I don't think it is, no. I don't think it is for him.
Well, we all also have a town, correct?
The problem with having a single individual set a standard is that then it becomes a kind of, what if that person leaves? How do you then determine what kind of systematicity?
Right, right, which is why.
One person's stylistic affinity.
Yeah.
I think we're close.
No, I'll think about it soon.
Do you have enough, do you have enough direction?
Uh, yeah, I think so, I mean, I think you share the concerns I have with being like this.
But they, and this came from Hollywood, this language.
Yeah. I got rid of some.
Well, you know, they have a lot of people there who are capable of making these sentences. Or I think that they do, yes.
We have a lot of people here too.
I mean, I think that.
Yeah, no, we do too.
They're not necessarily on the.
I mean, I think that, you know, two, the architectural criteria, those are pretty clear.
There's an architectural review.
Utilize or enhance the architectural elements of the building, I think, you know.
Not just arms, there's architectural review.
Be placed in a logical location in relation to the overall composition of the buildings. I think those are clearer, it's the first, the design quality stuff is.
And then neighborhood impacts, I would include a sentence that says and doesn't compromise the overall aesthetic of the area.
And then you're getting into it again. We have, we have language that.
Well, but that is a determinable, I mean, if you've got a neighborhood that has, you know, all queen in houses and you go in and put, you know, some factory looking thing, that, that could be sort of creative.
All right. One of our, one of our certain criterias, I mean, the way we often deal with it.
I wonder if there might be though, a thing, maybe you're thinking of like, you could unfoul nuisance.
Right, I mean, I'm sort of thinking of a plumber puts a potty up. Which some people might find sort of amusing and other people might think that's a light in our neighborhood.
Or a mechanical sign where it's toilet, the under going up and down on a motor and then it's noisy and then.
Yeah, exactly, a kinetic, a kinetic zone.
Just, just, yeah.
On the arrow it goes.
Water comes.
Right.
That's a good idea.
Now's the time where I'll say, your minds are in the gutter. How about number five? Exit one, you ready for that?
Fine.
Yep, let's do it. So we put signs on hold.
I made a little sign on my paper.
Actually, that reminds me, um, the DRB has actually requested to have another joint meeting. I don't want, I'm, I'm hoping that these land use regulation tweaks don't go on and on. But anyway, so I had asked Brian, the zoning administrator of staff at DRB, to ask them to come to our September landing commission meeting. And so maybe we can meet with them for a little bit. Brian will stay and do flood hazard stuff with us.
Okay, yeah, because I'd be happy to hear what the DRB has to say, but we wanna have our own review of these things.
Yes.
Separate and apart from that.
Yeah.
Like, we don't need their permission or even their counsel for our, our own deliberations.
Yes.
No, but it's good to hear what their, what their stumbling blocks are.
Absolutely, almost almost. I mean, it's been almost a year and a half now since we last worked with them, so they might have some more little tweaks there.
Sure.
When is our September meeting? Cause I might not be here.
I might not be there either. I think it's a Wednesday, so the first Monday is, um, the Wednesday after Labor Day. Labor Day? So we usually end up going with the Wednesday, so we should make sure.
Yeah, that I won't, that I won't be here.
You won't be here?
If it's the fifth, I really won't, sorry.
Um, we could.
It is the fifth.
We could also look at doing, um, I mean, typically we, we do do the fifth, we could.
The tenth is Rosh Hashanah.
The tenth is also when you have, the later the month, the more likely you are to. The walking tour is on September tenth, so.
Walking tour of what?
Oh, architectural history.
Yeah.
Devin Coleman is coming. Are you back for that?
No, I'm gonna be gone from the fifth of as well, sorry.
Do we have to RSVP for that walk?
No.
Okay, no. I really wanna do that, but I won't be able to.
Yeah.
Wanna make it the seventeenth?
Yeah, I mean, you can feel free to do it without.
I mean, we can, we can keep it on the fifth, but did you say you might not be able to do it on the?
Uh, no, the fifth looks okay.
We'll have to check with Kathy and Josh.
I, I would say do what's best for you guys, cause I don't know when I'm going to have a baby. Don't even enter me into your consideration.
As long as there are four of us, then we're good.
Yep. Liz, does the fifth work for you? What do we see about having it on the fifth?
See who can come.
See who can come, because it could be tough for Kathy.
Right.
She's usually good on Mondays, but her and her partner work things out.
Right.
So we wanna make sure she's available and see if Josh is as well.
Cause the walking tour night. Cause the walking tour night would also work for me.
Okay.
Walking tours in a day?
No, it's at five.
It's at nine?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. I think if we can try to stick with the fifth, that would be good, um, but I know it is a long night anyway, so.
If that doesn't work, I'll, I'll pull everybody.
Okay.
It's a fact.
So now we can go back to number five. Sorry.
Exit one?
Okay, so, um. We have noticed that when we did the zoning, um, I feel like we kinda were hoping for redevelopment in areas. We didn't really allow for a lot of room for growth. Because we're trying to, you know, keep the development where the infrastructure is and whatnot. Um, this, this is an older map because our official map is, um, but what, if you were looking at the right map, you would see this is not service center, so this is, um, neighborhood center, so you have, um, the neighborhood center as you come off exit one, so you've got, um, the outlet center, you have, um, Price Chopper is over here in the neighborhood center, um, you've got Rescue here. It's, it's not too much land. Then you have this little area of mixed use. There's a couple of houses, um, that are right off of, um, Canal Street here.
Yeah.
Um, and then you hit this neighborhood center, and then you have more mixed use, which is a smaller scale, um, development, smaller footprint. And so Red Clover Commons went in behind here, um, we think that was a really successful development. It seemed to be a desirable area for the housing partnership because it's near the hospital and shopping and got water and sewer, and so we were trying to think where are there some other areas that you could allow this to.
This is neighborhood center?
Yeah, so right now you've got neighborhood center here, mixed use, neighborhood center, uh, mixed use, and we decided to keep this, um, residential neighborhood back in here.
Is that where Red Clover Commons is?
Red Clover Commons is right here. Uh, in the neighborhood center. Um, particularly when, um, so we started looking, where could we fit another development similar to Red Clover Commons? Where does it make sense in town? Um, and again, it would depend on people being willing to bundle up a bunch of parcels and be able to sell them and whatnot, but there are some.
Is there, there are interest in doing that kind of thing?
Well, there was. I mean, they now figured out other plans, um, but that whole exercise just made us realize that, you know, we kept this as, sorry, this is not mixed use. This is, this ended up being residential neighborhood, so you've got neighborhood center, a little bit of residential neighborhood.
That's what I thought.
Here.
Here. This is the actual zoning, we'll just figure it out. So that makes more sense. So we put this into residential neighborhood to try to, um, protect kind of the character in here of Atwood Street.
Can you help me by showing me where Red Clover Commons is on?
Right here. Okay. Um, so the question here is, if we wanted to expand the neighborhood center because we really wanted to encourage similar developments, because we thought that that was a good scale, um, we identified a couple of areas, um, we've always tried to keep this kind of residential neighborhood to kind of protect the neighborhood that's there, but could it be redeveloped in the future, um, with a little bit more denser housing? How about this little mixed use such little area in here that's got, um, it's got the nursing home, well, that's actually in, don't worry about it, I'm sorry.
Is that part of a hospital PUD?
Good bunch of medical buildings. This is, uh, the nursing home is, um, these are a lot of medical offices, um, but they're in the mixed use, um, we can make that neighborhood center. Brian even suggested today that some acres could maybe be in the residential, or, sorry, in the neighborhood center, I don't know.
I think, I worry it would be a tough sell to take something that's smaller impact, say residential, and increase the impact.
Mm-hmm.
What is the difference between neighborhood center and mixed use?
Um.
As you see, the Price Chopper is there in the neighborhood center, but there are also businesses in that mixed use.
Yes, so there would be denser residential development is allowed in the neighborhood center, um.
Mixed use I think allows, if we're to have some reason, it'll, it, it allows for larger buildings than say a residential size, but still sort of four or five residential.
It's, it's, um, the building footprint is four thousand square feet. I think we've actually talked about moving that up to six thousand. Um, it allows eighteen dwelling units per acre in the mixed use neighborhood, but I would say that's, they're really small parcels, so I don't think you'd get there and there's, and in a four thousand square foot footprint.
I'm confused as to what the ask is.
We're discussing.
Do we want, what do we want to do?
Yeah, so the ask is, do we wanna look at allowing, expanding the neighborhood center in exit one? So that you could have, um, m- more multifamily housing, because you can't really have more than one or two units in the, in the residential neighborhood. Um, so you could have more of an apartment type building like Red Clover Commons is.
Sure.
Um.
But it would also allow for more Walgreens type development in that area as well.
And then. Yes.
So, who was it who came, Florida, and wanted to have buildings, say the Walgreens with housing on top, right? Wasn't that?
Oh, that was, um, Dandridge.
Right.
Yes.
So that planning concept was to have a more, uh, mixed use development with shops on the bottom and apartments above.
Yes.
In places like where the Walgreens is.
Mm-hmm.
And Price Chopper, like, develop them into, well, what you see in like Alexandria, Virginia, you know, just.
Have it more to the street.
More to the street and.
More mixed use buildings. Um, and the neighborhood center does allow for that. The question is, do we wanna allow more of that in that area?
What about, um, so we just talked about adding, I think this is service center, right? We just talked about adding.
No, that is, um, industrial.
I'm having trouble with the colors.
I know, sorry, they're two different maps. That's industrial. This is industrial, yes, it's accessed.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's purple.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, different color.
It's, it's this land.
So you're talking about near exit one, but not the exit one.
I, I was curi-, I was curious about that.
About that industrial area?
Well, uh, this area here is the interchange, is undeveloped, and there's large parcels here.
Yeah.
If you're talking about, again, we were talking about cluster housing earlier.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know.
I mean, that's. Well, you can't, I mean, you can get to it from Canal Street, from exit, from.
That's, yeah, I guess you, you walk or find the other.
You know. This is, and. You know, it applies as it being industrial land too. This is very, um, topographically constrained. I think in order to get that driveway in, you're probably gonna have to do some blasting there.
I guess I'm just, I'm hesitant to, if we expand in the neighborhood center in either of these directions, right? I'm a little hesitant about how the residents would feel there, because I think, while I, I like the idea of neighborhood centers and like walkable neighborhoods,
Yeah.
it is higher impactful than what's there now, which is residential. So if somebody who, you know, maybe lives like here and they feel like, well, the doctor's office next to me is cool, 'cause that's in a Victorian and it's not, you know, they have a whole big floor parking spaces, something bigger showing up there might.
Well, I agree with you.
Might be more impactful to them.
For both areas, but in particular, wasn't there someone who complained here?
There was.
About the hospital, so these people are already.
Yes.
With the hospital.
There was concern about that one.
These people are already feeling development pressure. I don't think we need to add to it.
Yeah.
And these people, you know, they got the score right there, so let's, let's leave these two peo-, groups of people alone. But the overall concept.
The concept I like, yeah.
What do you think?
But it's already, I mean, it's already the case. This, this, this is already zoned as a neighborhood center.
Mm-hmm.
So, so basic, basically, if we don't turn this into a neighborhood center and that into a neighborhood center, then we just leave it the way it is.
What's that area that's circled?
Mixed use, the, the one up by the hospital?
This one here.
No, that one. Oh, that's residential neighborhood.
So, so.
Do you wanna take that one?
That you're thinking of turning into a neighborhood center as well.
That was, that was the suggested area for neighborhood center.
I, I mean, I, like, like my colleagues here, I'm concerned about the people who live there. I, it seems, it seems not like a very nice thing for us to rezone underneath somebody's feet. That doesn't, doesn't seem like you would do that.
So it seems like, well, it seems like this is not an easy tweak, and so we, we need a more public.
Yeah, yeah.
And no one is asking for this.
Like this is not, nobody's asking for it.
And, but you just wanna spur more development.
It was concern feeling like, um, there's not a lot of room for growth, so we talk about growing in the town plan, but we haven't, like, this, there's not a lot of room for growth in this quarter.
Yeah, I guess I, the way, uh, we're probably thinking of it the same way, but the way I would say it is, is I like the idea of allowing room for growth if it's both, um, benefiting the residents who are already there and also potentially adding
Yeah.
more, um, affordable housing for people who aren't there yet, so it's like you're creating more assets.
Yeah, it's kind of like a, you know, harm kind of thing.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I think that we all feel that these people have a neighborhood and we don't wanna mess with it.
Yeah, so if I can do something to add more assets to the neighborhood, so they're like, oh, this is great, now I can walk to, you know, more things that I, I wanna go to.
And what's the, is this the Price Chopper?
Thinking of someone that lives there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what I would love to see in my neighborhood is more local businesses.
Mm-hmm.
And not necessarily, um, larger stores, the franchise stores.
Fanchers.
Um, that cover a lot of that stretch.
Do you live in one of these residential neighborhoods, or do you live in the?
I live right there.
Oh. Well, you can walk to store.
I can't, I can't.
Hmm.
But you'd like to see more.
And I would love to.
Local, locally owned, or small?
Would you, how would you feel about, I, I'm just trying to pick your brain, 'cause I'm, I'm hearing what you're all saying and I'm totally cool, like, we can let this slide and this is not a little tweak like we're trying to do. How do you feel about the scale of that neighborhood changing in the future, like, if there were more apartment buildings or if there were more?
I think it's a wonderful place for that to happen, um, but I think that the neighborhood center allows for more than just those apartment buildings or residential.
Yeah, don't.
And I don't think that that's.
Trade off.
Yeah, I don't think that that's, um, what the area needs more of yet.
Is it, is there a way to zone it so that you can have that?
Some of those project buildings.
Yeah, more, more multifamily housing, but not Walgreens type development.
Um, one thing we kicked around the office a little bit was this need for, we, we like Red Clover Commons, we think it's a really good project. You could not recreate it with the existing zoning, so is there some way to do like a PUD that allows for that kind of scale of development? That is, you know, reviewed and you see how it fits in the neighborhood? I don't know, that might not be the answer.
So this is neighborhood center and this is residential neighborhood?
Yes.
Do you want to be more flexible within the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood, to have, um, higher number of units within a parcel, within the residential neighborhood? Is that what you're go-, trying to achieve?
Um. Not necessarily. I mean, it could be one way we go.
You want.
But you don't want more Price Choppers, you want more clo-, Red Clovers. Yeah, I mean, that seems like, that seems good. We, we do need more housing and we need more affordable housing, but we don't need more affordable.
And there's, and there's, is there land, like, in the neighborhood center for that type of use?
There's not, no.
So what?
I mean, you, you know, it, but this happens all over town. It's like, okay, well, you could talk to the owner of this shopping plaza and see, could you get some parcels up front?
Right. Yeah, like the outlet goes belly up and some people sit there.
Right, the outlet's always a good one, it's always for sale, and so what if that was a scrape off for, you know, I mean, we do, we surround housing a lot with that.
So do we, do we allow? The, do we allow clustered housing, PUDs in neighborhood center or in industrial?
We don't allow housing in industrial at all.
Okay.
No, because, because we wanted to kind of, we have a, we don't have a lot of industrial landmarks.
So we wanted to keep that for that.
And so we kind of wanted to keep it for industrial because we wanted that to be the one that, you know, might have some noxious.
What's this, what's this, uh, bell shaped thing here?
That is the, that is a parcel I think it's making.
And this mess.
Yeah.
I put Red Clover Commons, right here.
It doesn't work for their zoning, we looked at it.
So, yeah, so that's my point then.
There's the building footprint, there is, um, yeah, the, the footprint of the building is too big, um, there's some other.
Well, I mean, just some sort of increased density in the residential neighborhood, if that's the goal that you want to achieve.
But if you can't do it under the current zoning regulations, then they can't do it.
That's the point.
Well, aren't we talking about changing the zoning regulations?
Right, well, we can't change the zoning regulations and exclude the development we don't want.
Right.
Well, we might, I mean, we might need to tweak the density.
No, but I'm saying, I'm saying if you want increased housing density in this general area, rather than putting this thing, this neighborhood into the neighborhood center, why don't you put increased density into the rest of the neighborhood?
That feels like a bigger change than, is that.
Yeah, 'cause that goes across everywhere, yeah.
Every, every, yeah, it might, it might open up something that we.
Big cameras. Well, maybe it's another project after the master plan of, you know, how, where, where do we want this residential?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out what is your ultimate goal.
Right, no, I mean, it's, it strikes me that it's worth going to this neighborhood and saying, you know, that the planning, the planning whatever office and commission have identified this area as a place where we potentially could have more denser population. How do we go, how do we go about doing that? I mean, particularly, presumably, all these people own their homes and that's a substantial investment, and so you don't want to, to pull the plug on the value of their property. Yeah, but I'm just. People really need that value.
What if you just, then if you, I'm looking at these two parcels, they're big, they're vacant.
There, I think there's some ledge in there. That, that whole little area is.
And if you wanted to just.
You could just rezone two parcels, though, can you?
No.
Well, yeah, you can add.
You can, you can. It's not that you can't, you have to have a compelling.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just trying to get.
I think it's not an easy fix. I think it is something worth looking at. Um, I don't think it's something that, where we could do, you know, master plans first and then, you know, doing some outreach on housing all over the community, I think, is what we're following.
There's a lot of energy on, to, to discuss housing. How, why don't we put that together into a parcel, so to speak?
Mm-hmm, right.
And then, and then, and then.
Okay, so we'll set that aside.
That was fun.
Putney Road. Putney Road, so. Yeah. So, um, before rezoning in twenty fifteen, um, these parcels over here, so it's Agway, it's the credit union there. Yeah, come, come like this. Um, they were all in the service center, which would have been the service center. We moved them to industrial. They're all non-conforming lots. Um, you've got half of the lamplighter that's been redeveloped over here and then the remaining half, I think, is still owned by the former property owner. Um, it just, I, I don't know.
I think you would sell it to the Wyndham Inter Housing Trust if you rezoned it.
I think it's possible. Um, it's, they're all non-conforming. I think they kind of, they're functioning commercial properties. I think it's possible. Um, it's, they're all non-conforming. I think they kind of, they're functioning commercial properties right now. Um, it just seems like that's a pretty small line change to make to bring properties into conformance and possibly allow for the redevelopment. Maybe not by Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust, maybe it's something else, somebody else, but we started down the path of some residential on this part of Putney Road. It's possible that it could continue and.
What's here?
That is, uh, the book press, no, sorry, full flex. And this is full flex field.
Uh-huh.
It's a book press.
They're separate parcels?
They are.
But they own the field, right?
They own the field, yeah. Yeah. Um, I had wondered about moving that into.
Is this, is this vacant? No, no, okay. I was out on the river the other day and I saw all these nice old homes down here.
Do you remember, I always wanted to drive down it, but it's.
We should have a little planning tour.
To the riverfront.
I went out in a pontoon boat. Maybe I can get it for the planning commission.
Commission. So you want to rezone those, how many parcels of that?
You wanna rezone those parcels, but you don't wanna rezone these parcels.
Five, and then I think this, this one is, is kind of a question. Um, I think that could. It's a really nice field right now. It's got a long history in the community of them trying to kind of preserve it for recreational fields. Um, moving it to commercial could be kind of up to the service center.
Why doesn't the town buy it?
I don't think it's per se to the town. I don't know, I don't know, there's.
Wasn't there some cultural?
Yes.
If it is just a question of that one parcel, couldn't you talk to the owners about that? Whether they would value that transition?
I don't think it would allow.
Sure, if you rezone it. Sure, but I think we have to figure out whether we.
Achieve the goal. If you rezone it, then there'd be more development pressure on it.
Yes.
And we wanna keep it vacant.
Well, they have a, no, I mean, I wouldn't say we wanna keep it.
They have a right to use it.
They have a right to.
They have a right to use it.
Use it. I think the question for us, is it better in the service center where it could be redeveloped with a mix of residential, commercial uses? Or is it better in the industrial zoning district because it's a flat parcel that might be good for an industrial use? I, it's a tough.
Wow, are we gonna change the three mini storage or?
These things are not simple.
It could turn into mini storage in the service center. Um, it could. Um, let's see.
It's great for our land. I really like the idea of having it be a field and have more kids for it.
But then we need to buy it. Somebody needs to buy it.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Um, I mean, in the service center, there's a, yeah, it could be a gas station. It could be, um, I'm just trying to see.
Could be an art gallery.
Could be a manufacturing plant or a heavy construction business, or, those are all conditional uses.
In a service center, you could have a manufacturing plant?
Yep.
Wow.
But, I mean, don't forget, manufacturing these days is not manufacturing, it's not, you know, it's been, we're not really talking smoke stuffs that's happening here.
Yeah, like, that's sort of where it is right. Happening over Morrison Delano now.
Um.
Just right next door.
Smoke stuffs? There, it's industrial, yeah.
So you could have auto in either place. You could have automobile, um, repair or sales in either.
Oh, yeah, it's industrial, yeah.
I don't know, it's.
Um, I think what you get if you move it into service center, I don't think, is you get some of these recreational things like theaters, movie theaters, sports arena, and you get the, the residential.
So it's a, so it's a plus. I mean, all you're doing is adding residential, 'cause it's already zoned industrial, so you could already put a machine there.
Yes.
But is the, is the, are the, are, I mean, that's the same thing as the last one, are the owners gonna get pissy that you rezone them from underneath them? I don't know about that.
I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I think that this opens up.
The lamplighter guy would really like it.
I think this opens up more possibilities for that property.
But this property, not necessarily this property.
Oh, I'm just talking about.
The, the front parcel, the field.
So we would, we would rezone full flex field and the other stuff up?
And this?
Yeah, that's one possibility. I mean, this full flex field, though, this, there's a lot of community.
I'd leave it alone.
We need to know what the community goes.
Yeah, so that, I mean, but, but we've got the same deal with these little.
These little ones?
These little ones that we have with this little one. I mean, if we're gonna rezone three parcels, why don't we just rezone those two?
I think they would welcome this because prior to 2015, these were commercial properties. And so now they're noncon- a lot of them are non-conforming. Like, the use can continue, but, you know.
They would welcome it because essentially they were pissed that they were rezoned. And so if we're tweaking things to make them better, we'll zone them back and everybody would be happy.
Rezone them back.
Yeah.
This is a bigger change.
Yeah, that is a bigger change.
Was the full flex field in, it's just a twist, was that in the, the service center district before and now it's in the industrial or?
I don't believe so. I think it's always been industrial.
So it had a little floor to it.
Yes. I can double check that, but I do think about it.
So I'm game for the rezoning, provided we know that the owners are happy.
Yeah, I would just do, now, just if we're gonna do it, just do the ones that are welcoming that, because they used to be in that zone, I just.
Yeah, zone them back.
And it's a good tweak.
And it's good to do good tweaks.
Yeah, good tweaks.
All right?
Okay. So, number?
We're good for now?
Seven, yep.
Moving on to number seven. You've already got your agenda, it's settling into your mind.
Seven, eight, nine, and ten.
My, Ash has said, said four and five and it said other.
Other. Other, these are the other.
Other, say again.
Other, these are the other. This is seven, seven is, um, we've talked about it.
Obviously reached my limit.
Don't worry, eight's easy.
I, I can.
What about, so, what is, what is, what is seven?
You can handle that.
Okay, so seven has to do with the lot coverage. That's the amount of impervious surface, yeah.
We talked about this last time.
And we didn't, but we didn't finish it. Um, so it's currently at sixty, it used to be at ninety. We wanted to improve stormwater management and improve landscaping, that's why there was such a dramatic drop to sixty percent. However, we found that's very difficult with a couple of commercial redevelopments that came before us, they were kind of getting just over the sixty. So, um, there is a, a book, um, the Land Use Development, um, code that kind of recommends that a service center be at seventy percent. So we could do that. Um, I think we've talked about and we're generally okay with seventy percent. But there's a couple of other ways that we could go about it, too. Liz and I had gone to a training where there, you kind of got a credit for, um, having effective.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically, if you treat over a certain percentage, so say we kept it at sixty percent and we said our lot coverage is sixty percent, but if, if you are over the sixty, you know, anywhere from sixty to seventy or seventy-five or whatever the number is, any of those, that ten, extra ten percent is going to have to be handled directly on site, meaning that you couldn't stick it into a stormwater pipe and put it in the state or the town's stormwater system. So you can maybe have up to seventy or seventy-five percent, but in order to do that, you're gonna have to handle it on site. You know, using a green infrastructure, green stormwater infrastructure, a low-impact development, because it'll improve the water quality and.
And is the DRB good with things like that? Do they enforce that?
They, yeah, they've, they've enforced the coverage.
Inter- not only enforcing coverage, but enforcing green infrastructure?
Yeah, they've been.
Great.
You know, the engineers have been doing what they need to do.
I like that idea.
Yeah. So that, that would be the effective coverage, that's option three. Or option two, sorry, I talked over it, is to just go straight up to allow a ten percent increase over the district standard for waiver. So you can, each district has a, um, lot coverage. And then currently there's waiver language, so you could do five percent more or two thousand square feet, whichever is less. So in this service center, that doesn't really work, it doesn't give them enough.
I vote for option three, yeah.
Option three?
Me too.
What is X percent?
Yeah. Um, do, that's what we have to decide. Do we wanna allow them up to ten percent more, it just has to be handled on site?
Yeah, ten percent.
Okay. What's that?
That's still so strange.
Okay.
All right, and now on to eight.
I think that gives a bigger lead. Eight, um, this is just a really clean up, so we don't really need to talk about it. We, as you can see, one of our draft maps showed a service center at exit one. In the end, we changed that to neighborhood center, so this is just a.
Fix.
Okay, good, easy fix.
Number nine.
Number nine. So we, um, we have two exemptions in our stormwater regulations. Where basically if you're not, one of them is if you're not increasing the impervious area by more than five hundred square feet, then you don't have to comply with these regulations. The problem is, is these, these exemptions are letting sites that are like paved everywhere to continue to be and not improve their stormwater management. So zoning administrator has seen this with lots of applications and his recommendation is that we get rid of these exemptions because we really need to improve.
Done.
You know, we, a lot of it is going into the town system, so I can think of a development on Frost Street where, you know, that's, if you're working with an engineering firm, they're usually gonna make some changes and try to improve it. But there's other ones that are just, the site is so paved and if you're redeveloping in that paved area, then you don't have to make any changes and.
And they should, I, it's a, I mean, it's a serious thing, they should want to.
They should improve it.
So, yeah, they wanna do what's easiest for those part, but then it's, it's a cost that's borne by the town. Because we, it's going into our stormwater system and soon enough, you know, we're gonna need permits and.
Is there, uh, is there a compliance date that's attached to this change?
No, it would be if something redevelops, so it would, you know.
Would it be?
It would be triggered.
If it redevelops or like resurfaces or?
We haven't talked about the resurfacing yet, but that is, that's on the list. Um, this would be, um, you know, groundwork is just gonna build up Frost Street.
Change, change use or major cycle plan.
Major cycle, yeah.
So, so change use, not update, doesn't it?
So.
Well, I think so.
Like for a store that's been there for twenty years and is gonna be there for another fifty or a hundred.
And if they have no plans on doing an addition or anything like that, no.
No change.
There's no change until it gets triggered.
Hmm.
Yeah. There are some things that are coming down from the state, maybe states, some states' groundwater permits are gonna be at one and a half acres over and that like triggers in some point in the twenty twenties. As those turn out, but.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I'm, yeah, I'm good with that.
People will view that as being more restrictive, but I think it's the.
Jess, you good with that?
Yeah.
The water quality and the stormwater and the, that's good, yeah.
All right, we like that.
Last one is inns. Um, we have a provision that if you are an inn, you have to have your guest parking between the buil- you can't, it cannot be located between the building and the street. So particularly in the rural parts of town, you know, you might have a big lot and it might make more sense to have your parking be in front of the building than have to pave an area out back or whatever. Each district has parking standards, so if you are in the rural district or the rural residential, you're still gonna have to comply with shielding your parking from neighboring properties and whatnot. So it just seems like it's a little.
Seems like it's, it's just a little bit too much.
Just a little bit thing about inns, yeah. It's the same with bed and breakfast, um, but bed and breakfasts are smaller.
Difference between the two?
What's the difference?
An inn and a bed and breakfast.
An inn can serve food for the public. Bed and breakfast, yeah, it's also a number of rooms, so bed and breakfast, I think, are limited to six or eight rooms. Property has to live on site, you can't serve the public.
So what's the change?
So the change is to remove the requirement in inns that the parking has to be between, cannot be between the property line and the, um, front of the building, and it just reverts to whatever the district says. And if you're talking about a residential neighborhood, it's gonna say that it can't be there. If it's talking about the rural or the rural residential, it's gonna say that you need to buffer your parking from view. You can be there with landscaping or something.
Okay.
Good.
Excellent work.
I'm just gonna, oh wait, there's still something we're gonna do.
Yes, one more time.
H.
Yikes.
So I, um, had told you that I'm gonna fly for a municipal planning grant. I wanted to know if you had, I'm trying to work on a budget and kind of what we want included in it. So I just kinda wanted to see if you had any thoughts. I can throw out what I was thinking of, kind of looking for in the RFP. And that way you can share. So I want it to be a pretty focused but robust, um, public outreach that I want a consultant to help us with. I would like some kind of top-ups where maybe we're activating some of the, um, alleyways or maybe we're doing more like the parklet that's being done, you know, maybe it's a, on one of the streets, we're putting, you know, we're converting a parking space into a little seating area or something like that. So I would like a consultant to help us with that. Um, and I also, in terms of the final document, want something that's pretty illustrative and I don't want it to be, you know, a thick document. I want it to, you know, look really spiky and splashy. Kind of be thin and.
Those are consumable.
Yeah.
Consumable.
The consultant writes the document?
Usually, yeah, they'll, they'll help with that. I mean, we'll, we'll be involved. They will probably come and meet with the planning commission. And then we'll all be assisting with the outreach.
I have four things. Even though it's beyond my good time. Remember the meeting we had when we discussed all the pathways?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like that to be in the plan.
Yeah.
That was fun, yeah.
I'd like someone who's an expert in helping the stores withstand, um, e-commerce. Because there's so much pressure on stores and we want them to be viable. I'd like to talk about his preserving, historic preservation. And sustainability measures.
You want a consultant to do this or you want the process to do this?
Well, both.
Okay.
And when you talk about sustainability, are you referring to?
I'm referring to bicycle use, um, like a, maybe like a transportation loop that would reduce traffic. Walking, where?
Are you talking about energy tip stuff as well, renewables or efficiency or?
Mostly efficiency, but. What I'm talking about is mostly, you know, the shopper.
Yeah.
You know, trips to the downtown.
What's the relationship between planning and what we do and the, um, social struggles of the street?
That's a good question.
That's a good question. I think it should be on the list.
I think it's something that we're gonna encounter. I think there is a couple of ways that, I mean, I feel like the, kind of the tactical or, like, activating the streets and activating spaces, um, is one thing that we can do to, you know, at least help with maybe the perceptions of downtown. I mean, I, you know, are we gonna solve? Is the downtown master plan gonna, you know, really take on homelessness or pain handling? I don't envision that. But I see it more as what can we do, um, you know, with the quality of life things in downtown to maybe help? Help fields or? you know, with the quality of life things in downtown to maybe help, help fields or...
We can identify what the select board is doing about those issues.
In the process, I think it would be helpful to have someone who can make sure we have some level of cultural competence, not just for the diversity that's in our town, you know, race and background and ethnicity, but socioeconomic diversity and making sure that all voices are participating in the vision for the place that we all occupy.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And figuring out ways to have those people feel like they're part of the community and not so much...
And conversation.
And the conversation and not so much an intrusion.
I think it would be better to, to have us all here together as opposed to opposing forces.
And if anyone has more thoughts, I'm sure you've, you've accepted two.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm going to be working on it over the next month.
So what's the timeframe for that? You get the consultant and then we get, go on the project?
Yeah, so it's going to be a little bit, I mean, if we're successful with this grant, so the application is due October the first. But I'll have a draft by beginning of September because the select board needs to, I'll, we'll need to take it to the select board. So they're going to have to have time anyway. They'll make decisions usually in December when the money is released. So we, we're probably looking at getting a consultant if we're successful on early next year.
And this is a federal or a state?
It's a state. It's a state, right.
How much?
The max is twenty and we give a contribution of six. So that's the max that we can ask for them.
It all goes for a consultant?
Doesn't have to. I mean, it depend, it, we can look at that budget if we need materials, if we want to do a survey or, you know, there's other, we can go outside for our own public outreach or...
Sounds good.
It's amazing how consultants can propose to use up all the money that we have.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sure, I'm sure they can. I'm sure they can.
And a lot of these downtown master plans, like it's a consultant team, so they will bring in, you know, traffic engineering, transportation engineering firm and there'll be, you can often get an economic development specialist.
I, I would be interested to see a consultant or a group that has some experience or background with more creative community outreach than we've been able to really execute.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
We did our best with Farmers Market. That's where we met Kate. All right, everybody?
Yep.
I would appreciate a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
All right.
One favor. And then the meeting is September fifth unless we hear from Kate.
Yeah, I'm going to make sure we can have a floor on this.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Enjoy your September meeting.
Thanks.
Happy days. Hope I, hope I don't break anything.